We're going to go into public meetings here this date. And our public meeting pertaining to two items here. One is ordinance four dot twenty-one entitled base salary for the chief of police. And the other one is ordinance four point two-one dot B entitled base salary for the town clerk. And I would like to say that I appreciate what Ms. Hatfield, Mr. Chief of Staff, for what they do for the town. They really put a lot of effort into what they do and we couldn't operate without them. And what this pay raise for them is always open to the public. Open to the public.
How much of a pay raise is that?
Ma'am?
How much of a pay-
Two hundred and fifty dollars a month. Break, break.
What are they making now?
Ooh, gets on that sheet.
I don't know that, but I'll throw it.
No, you don't prepare because I've got my- This is mine, ma'am.
Okay.
And we can transfer it to the next one.
Okay.
And there's ours now. You guys have yours.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Hat- Ms. Hatfield's base salary right now is two thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars with two fifty added to it. That would take her two thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. Now, the chief's salary, right now he's at two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. He'd take him to two thousand eight hundred dollars per month. That's what it is. They draw a public record. Is there any discussion amongst the board members?
Well, I think, I think they need a raise that the town can afford.
Sir?
I think they need a raise that the town can afford.
Oh, yes, sir. We're, uh, we're, we're starting to turn the corner.
Yeah.
We're, uh, we got a long way to go, but even Ms. Jennifer can say that, uh, we're, we're turning the corner.
They've actually done this already, you know, Robert, and they've early, early committed to the audience, this is kind of difficult.
And, uh-
Well, I think already you have a raise. You know, when you get a raise, you have a little better attitude about your job and everything. And, uh, not so much, you probably would do a better job, but the very least you have a better attitude.
Well, it's, uh, a lack of loyalty in jobs. You see it, but you don't see what goes on behind the, behind the back door. You know? I'm sure the chief's same way I am, is that there's a lot that goes on.
And I've never heard of an instance where policemen are old peppy, you know? Not sure this won't be one either.
While we're giving a little time here, if there's no discussion on this, I'll bring this information up to you. We have twelve homes, uh, to be added to our sewer up on the Gil and Gotham Street in Norville. Uh, it's a federal program. Martin Carpe worked in my research engineering. Uh, I met with him before he'd be here Wednesday. Uh, we have fully funded part, six hundred, I think six hundred and seventy-seven thousand or something like that.
It was six hundred, something like that.
A thousand. And, uh, that's gonna be a plus for the town. We got an agenda tonight. We got a strike, go out and bid for another street to get overlaid. I met Mr. Rhineberg, who will be, uh, Friday morning, but we went to hunt when that Friday morning we went to-
I don't remember what four guys by-
We met with Mr. Harold, uh, I got his number in there. He's a federal, uh, hood, uh, financial man, I guess what you would call it. Uh, we're gonna be talking with him. Uh, there's some money available. Uh, I told him we'd like to talk to him, he could be coming back to maybe, uh, looking to get a few more of our streets obtained, or possibly we could get another police car out of there. Uh, things are in the works, it just, it just takes time to get that stuff. While we're not doing-
He's on his pocket. He has a good boss who's in the company phone, and-
Oh, all right.
I'll get some of that more.
All right.
Oh, no, I'm glad I heard that.
While we're giving a little time, uh, we're, we're, we're sharp personnel for the town workers, so, uh, if you see something, and this, you know, we're trying to keep up with mowing, cutting the grass, uh, picking up this, doing this, and doing that, but if you see something that's real, really needs to create more attention to it, bring my attention, we'll get that done. Right now, we're kind of sharp personnel. Yes, ma'am?
What do you all do about graffiti? Does the town take care of graffiti, or are the individuals that own the property supposed to take care of graffiti?
How do you address it, if you go over it, too?
We're going to Tangi, Miss Os- uh, I ain't out there right now, I didn't, uh, Tangi anyway. And I think her husband went there and sprayed back over it.
I saw him spray, but I didn't know what he done, nothing but-
I think her, her husband went back there.
You have a place with pictures?
Well, Dale and I were just driving down a property, but it's, appears to be a metal building on somebody's property, but the whole front is graffitiing in blue.
What did it say?
Oh, that's how, that's what, yeah, that's what comes down.
That's what they're like, Tangies.
Yeah. They collect it.
Yeah, they, they sprayed paint in it with blue. That's what it said.
Yeah. It wasn't blue, it was white.
We're American, I'm doing something right.
There you go.
Well, we had, I tell you what, Robert, we had real good luck doing just what y'all are doing, because in Clint, we didn't have, and we were in an area where there was a lot of graffiti. I mean, it was out of hand. But in there in the town of Clint, and I got this from a high school administrator, he taught, he taught me when he was taking care of schools, that with that graffiti, if you see it and you get painted, that they'll, they'll eventually get up. Think you figure out, we've got more paint than they do, they, and they weren't good in the school system too, because they painted and by six-thirty in the morning, we had it painted over, so they couldn't show it off and point it out to their friends and everything like that. They just backed off, but that's, that's, that's the right way to go, it's just, you know?
But anytime anybody sees you do that stuff, just let us know, it'll be addressed.
Um, while we're talking, just generally talking.
Yeah.
Do we have a set time for these little feller about this talk to be out of night?
I don't think we do, do we?
We need to get something, 'cause I was talking to one yesterday back over here behind City Hall, and just into no good. I said, "Stuff's getting painted around here? Y'all out this time of night? Guess who's gonna be getting blamed for all this?"
Do you get their names?
They are going to the housing projects, I want to go down the road.
No.
But it's four little bitty fellas, we need a curfew for those under age people.
I thought it, well, I'll just go back, I thought it one time you said, I thought there was one.
There may be, I don't know.
I haven't seen it, I don't know.
No, and I don't think there is.
But when your son draw it up, keep these fellas off the street that time of night, they shouldn't even be outside the house that time of night, they're going to-
They, pertaining to the water department, eventually, you know, the, the, the other water system up at the junction's coming along real well. I want to bulge it over with Marvin, and he kind of keeps me posted. Eventually, as the town of Maryville may be going to go far enough that way, and they come far enough this way that we, we have everybody covered.
Well, once this all instituted-
Yeah.
And there's a valve up there, uh, I've been told it's close to the Sand Lake Road-
Yeah.
That once that's completed up there, that valve will be closed. Do we have a valve over here on three-eight-nine that goes down to Vivids?
Yeah.
And that valve is closed there. Now, what we have an agreement with, if someone's out to our water, they can push it to us or something, because our water, we put water to them, so that, we have the same agreement. Is that, is that a valve or six up there?
Six.
Six, that's a six?
Yeah.
That was the junction.
Right.
So, uh, yeah, that, there's a, uh, that's addressed before it's whenever it's completed, that valve will be closed, but they'll be on record, they'll be self-sufficient.
Yeah. Well, that's coming on pretty good, I think, up there.
Yes, we can do it. Yes, but they all have their, my, my, switch this room or out. Okay.
Yeah, well, I was just, I was always first to.
Okay, so it doesn't, he don't move to work?
Yeah, I'm working, I'm having the- I'm just playing with all that. All right, this time we get into our record meeting, we play and stand, and I'll have the Ryan Park, they live in our area, okay? Please remain standing for pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, please watch over this council as we make decisions for the town of Maryville and surrounding area. Lord, we ask at this time, that everything that's going on in this country, that you watch over us and guide us and guide everybody to do things in your way. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge your allegiance. Are there any amendments to the amendment?
Uh, yeah, I need to take Cory Heenan off as a full-time officer, I had him terminated last week.
When we get to him, you'll have to say, "Drew, terminating, so they can vote on."
Oh, okay. Why do we have to go to her?
Which, which we can change number two from the service department.
Okay.
So she's going to call him?
No, he's still in the head of state, he air communes.
We still, we still say more, if you're walking on it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to move mail at the full time. To replace one.
Do I have a motion on that?
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm, okay. Uh, approval of the man is headed for the record meeting June thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, I have a motion?
Motion.
The motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of financial statement for June two thousand sixteen, I have a motion?
Second.
Motion, second, okay, thank you. I have a, a small list under mayor's comments, uh, as of today, this was on you a few minutes ago, we've had twenty-six police officers killed in the United States. We had, they had two more today at the courthouse in Michigan that were killed. I'm sure that will total that twenty-six. And after I announce this, I'd like to have a moment of silence, uh, let's have a moment of silence for our country's police, police corps, and our, and our Maryville Police Corps, our military veterans, not only in the, our homeland, but foreign countries, and the rich family. So let's take a moment of silence for that place. Thank you. Uh, homecoming, uh, be September thirtieth here at Maryville High School. I have a thing to schedule, I don't know that he played. School will be starting back August the third, um, so, that's three weeks from this coming Wednesday. So we'll have to watch school buses, and kids will be driving back in their vehicle going to school and all that good stuff. Uh, we have a vacancy here, be coming up in November the eighth for our town council. Qualifying date on that is August twentieth through the twenty-second of August. And election will be November the eighth. Uh, progressive waste solution, had in the paper, uh, last week, uh, they're going to work early in the morning, so you need to get your trash cans out early, because, uh, they're, they're trying to think to eat like everybody else, get through their day's work, they'll leave it back on. Uh, I didn't get a movie night on this March, did we have a movie night coming up?
Yes, on this Friday, on, this Friday, on the fifteenth.
Friday, fifteenth?
The movie is Back to the Future.
Back to the Future, seven, seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty, this Friday night, at the Jack Taylor Pavilion. So they have plenty of popcorn, Coach.
Yeah.
Got plenty of popcorn, change, and it worked, but I, I bet everyone is, is buying popcorn.
Ask your board?
Ask your board. Okay. Moving on, under old business, uh-
David, I got one more, public radio. Uh, last year, Sandra and the message church, this is to the message church, but it's open to all the kids, will have a pool club again this year. What are the ages of Sandra?
From first grade through junior high.
First grade through junior high, it's open to all the kids in the community and everything, and we'll get you, we'll get you the information later and everything, but if you got the kids, your grandkids, your stuff, get ready, once school gets going, then they'll get set up, and they're a lot of fun, they, they do-
I heard, I heard that it's a good turnout, too, that.
It's a real good turnout, so.
It's a good program, appreciate y'all's effort.
I didn't realize school was starting on August the third, that kind of jolly, we will start pool club in September, it'll be the third Wednesday in September. I'm like, wow, that's weird.
This is the earliest we've started, I think.
Yeah, it, it can happen earlier.
Anyway, it is.
Okay, under old business, item number one, ordinance four point two-one entitled base salary for the chief of police. Any discussion on that? You know, I think motion?
Second.
A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all. Uh, under old business, item number two, ordinance four point two-one B entitled base salary for the town clerk, any discussion? Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all very much. And now we're going under Gil, uh, Mr. Robert, you're up.
Uh, yes, I stated earlier, Mr. Cory Heenan did not meet his obligations for the police force in Maryville, so I had him terminated two weekends ago, and blew in mail up in his spot, put her in full time.
What, what were you trying to-
He did not meet the requirements. He was coming in late, missed a whole weekend without calling me and that he knew anything about it, and I had him checked out on one Saturday, he has a Lake Charles, a buddy, when he's hoping up there working. Now, I'm just not gonna have somebody like, if I can't stand on him, I don't need you.
Yeah, my correction, you need to be on time.
And, uh, later on down the road, I'm gonna try to find somebody to take mail's place, I prefer to have a female officer, but that's gonna be the next meeting.
I make a motion to terminate Cory.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed, motion carried.
I make a motion to, I want that.
I'll make my next pass. I'm gonna make a motion to accept.
No, that's a full time.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
You're what you get into, huh?
Yep.
She felt guilty coming up here dressed the way she was.
Yeah.
All things happened like it did last night, and-
This morning.
She jumped right on in, said, "I worry about getting paid in your spot, I just gotta take care of you and your job today for the bar, because I'm going through a rough time every-"
Okay, um-
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Robert, what will we do with her going with full? I know you're gonna try to fill a position with a woman to watch the elderly and everything, or are y'all just gonna kind of double duty on that and everything till we get somebody in and make sure-
She still gonna be doing, and plus, I'm probably a mail officer, but I don't feel right having a mail officer go into some elderly lady's house.
Right, I understand that.
Not that, I'm saying, I don't do anything, but anything can come up and he's stuck in there.
But they will be, we will make sure they're covered and everything till we get somebody in, especially this time of the year.
So if y'all know of a female that's needing a part-time job doing something like that, feel me, and I mean, Mel's got a friend over there that was a police officer, and she says she'll be glad to come in, work twelve hours, we can help out on that part of it. But if we can find somebody around here, but that's the problem, you can't get nobody around here that'll come in and do something like it.
Okay, moving right along, under D business, uh, item number three, announced with a special call meeting, we're on August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, to adopt the military rate for the tax code two thousand and sixteen. Have a motion for that?
Motion.
Okay, second, did we have a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
May I ask a question? May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I read the whole article, I believe, in the Lake Charles newspaper about this military. I still have no clue-
The tax, the tax-
What is it?
Ma'am?
What is it? I mean-
Well, the tax assessment, Mr. Brent Rutterford and the Ritter, this assessment that they do, property, uh, we have home, and we're down, we have homestead exemption-
Right.
And, uh, they have a military rate that goes on, prevent me from wronging this.
No, no, that's, that's right, that's what it's for, is this property.
They, they assess it, and, uh, this, it really, you gotta be up in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for this really amount of anything, far, far as the set, far as your tax increase, you, you know, we all get those tax deals, and starting in, uh, part of December, which you deal in January, but this is where this all comes from.
Okay.
It's a property tax.
It's a property tax.
Property tax.
I'm coming from Texas and we-
Ma'am?
I'm coming from Texas and it was a property tax, and I just did not understand the bill.
But it won't be there once you have paid taxes, I promise of that.
But I, so far, I think, okay, hey, we stayed with, I just did it on, like-
So last year, we were blessed with paying those classes.
Yeah.
That's changes, yeah, that's changes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, I have a motion, second, on that, everybody's opposed to that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, informant of Mr. John Webb of CPA, is an art dealer down in Maryville for fiscal year July one, two thousand sixteen, through June thirty, two thousand seventeen. Uh, he, he's been doing this for years and years and years, and this is nothing new, we just, this is something that comes up on the docket every year, so- Motion? Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all. Uh, vacation time, sick time, holidays, fiscal year July one, two thousand sixteen, through June thirty, two thousand seventeen, I was told that each of you have that in your package. Uh, I hope y'all will set this up there, uh, we had one holiday added to that, that was a moniker, uh, was it last year or this year?
You wanted to do, you said after this coming year, but this-
Yeah, but, but this year before that, I was trying to do this, different offices, and everybody's closed, I said, if they're closed, we're gonna be closed.
I forgot.
Can't get on this, and that, so we just made that another holiday, which I know, I know they appreciate that. Okay, I have a motion for the-
I should move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I heard more first, didn't you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, council meeting for fiscal year, fifth of July one, two thousand sixteen, through June thirty, two thousand seventeen, y'all have that in your package, um, I have a motion for that.
Motion.
You're on the city town?
Sir?
You're, you're a city town?
City, oh.
City town, city town.
Yeah, yeah, we've already done that.
City?
Yeah.
How do, how do y'all operate this here, city town?
You get three days over six months.
Now, if you, if you wait too many days, do they have the techs on?
Right, it's, it's maxed out at two hundred- Right, it's, it's maxed out at two-hundred-and-forty days, and just six, six weeks, uh, confused.
You know, sometimes we need a ministry, right, if you have a sit time, they, you know, they wag out, could we pay them for it?
Well, what they do is, is use or lose when they start reaching that maximum, they take days off, so they don't lose their sit time.
You know, my wife, if they, if you have twelve, they, two, they present the, uh, how you say, if you want to wait six, that's to keep your Sydney day, if I retire, I have a year, I have a year, sit time.
Do we have a motion, all of council, do we have to run it?
We take a part, probably in a second.
Uh, in a second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all. Uh, what is it?
I'm just listening.
Okay.
Request for this to repair and pay Brian Street between, uh, Title Street and Fraser Street, uh, this is, uh, what is that, what grant's that under?
It's that thirty thousand.
I know, but is that the, community grant?
Yes.
Little, yeah, community grant, that we.
Of the L C D, the.
Yeah, yeah, uh, over here where Fraser's at, uh, street there, front of the Message Church, where Harst Harst live, you turn there, and you head north up to Title Street, hopefully that street there.
Yeah, that takes me to the bad way.
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna.
Will you pay or pay type?
Pay it. So it's down here, uh, I've already met, uh.
Basically, one of our grant will give us.
Well, yeah, it's, it won't cost them, of course, we, we'll have to pay for them, we'll get rid of them, this has to know from that, to, to our grant, but, uh, David O'Beal, I've already met with him and everything, I'm sure you, they're gonna be wanting to do it, as well under what, uh, we've been awarded to do it, so I would say no problem out with that. I have a motion for this?
Motion, ma'am.
Thank you.
And it's motion, the other second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all. Uh, and now we're down to the public participation, uh, comments, questions, concerns, uh, is open to the ones we have here tonight. Any questions? Brian Harvick? Aye?
Not in four.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, so, so I'm gonna go now. Everybody know it, we're in the summertime, watching the eight, so.
Mr. Allen told me the day that he just put a plate up for you, and he's got, then was on the.
That, that's what I wanted to announce, I let you brought that up, everybody's on plate, uh, fact is, well, if he's already got the, for July, we get four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollar credit, for your meter, you, and, and, uh, plate up, so, so. That oughta, that should help a lot, with July.
You have, you had to pay due, whatever.
I.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you didn't, you had to pay, didn't you? But July, you got four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollar credit, and that's, that's everybody that's on plate up.
Don't pay it, don't pay that, that's what I'm saying to you.
Now, let's get more, I can do it.
Yes, and that would be us.
And also, it could, no matter how many meters you get, you get to pay, to pay for those.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna have, it's gonna have a pound out of this, it, uh, we have roughly around twenty meters, uh, some of them will eat up around that, but others, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a couple of years.
Eighty years.
There's no further discussion, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn our meeting, appreciate y'all coming out.
Play the motion to adjourn, second.
Now, motion, say all in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all very much.
So, six hundred, you can run the air to get here this month.
Yes, we never got that in Texas either.
Hey, that's new.
Yeah, we don't get that over there, we have your bill, I'll cut you off.
It's not a break for. I have four.
Nobody give me a thing.
We might to probably, around, end of August first of September, have something for.